Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Indian Hill Board of Education meeting. I'd like to go ahead and call the September 19th, 2023, meeting to order. May I have a roll call?
Mrs. Eichholz?
Here.
Mr. Marks?
Here.
Mrs. Singh?
Here.
Mr. Summerall?
Here.
Mr. Tullis?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and do the adoption of the regular meeting agenda and addendum. We need to adopt the agenda. May I get a first?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item five, public commentary. Mr. Davis, do we have any public commentary this evening?
We have none this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item six, Mr. Konecki, recognition, correspondence, and announcements.
Welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here this evening. We're going to start actually with item C tonight, which is a new feature this year. It'll be a monthly video minute. And Mr. Samini, if you could help us out, please, I'll go ahead and...
Change the lighting here.
We want to welcome our brave community for a magical reveal. This is the culmination of over four and a half years of vision and planning by our school community members, volunteers, staff, faculty, board members, and students who all came together to dream up these buildings. The design is amazing. I can't wait for the public to get to use these buildings. And tonight, we're going to welcome our community and say a big thank you.
The students are going to be thrilled. The renovations really make the school look like the education's going on inside.
I think the community will be in awe of our new spaces. It is unlike any other elementary school addition in the state of Ohio. We are able to bring innovative learning environments to our students, and that is what they deserve each and every day.
Everything is fresh, new, colorful. It takes me back to when I was in this same building probably 20-plus years ago, and it's just so fun to see how it's evolved over the years.
What they did is just great and awesome. So we're really delighted, and everyone is having so much fun.
What we do here every day is magic for kids. And now, when people walk through the doors, they're going to feel the magic.
A heartfelt thank you to everybody who put time and effort into the vision that has ended up in this campus project. We are so grateful to our school community members. I cannot thank you enough for what you provide for the amazing children and families of this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, I can't think of a better way to continue this start of this meeting by welcoming back the young man we wanted to recognize in our last meeting, Jason Ja. Jason, could you please come up to the podium? We want to celebrate Jason today as a student athlete, one of our finest Braves. He anchored the junior world record relay in the 4x100 freestyle for Team USA's this summer. This junior was one of more than 600 swimmers from more than 100 countries competing at the 2023 World Junior Swimming Championship recently. In August, Jason also made the national headlines after he won the 2023 Summer Junior National Championship 100-meter freestyle with a time of 49:39, becoming the fifth-fastest 15- or 16-year-old in the history of the United States. Congratulations, Jason. Jason, we don't want to put you on the spot, but most of us do not know what it's like to be an elite student athlete. Can you please explain a little bit about what you do to compete at this level?
Yeah, so it's definitely a lot of balancing, being able to do what I do in this classroom, and then being able to transition to that and work hard in the water. And a huge thank you to Indian Hill, all the administrators, all my teachers. You guys have made it, I wouldn't say easy, but definitely a lot easier for me to manage to excel in both areas of my life and keep me doing what I love doing without being overly stressed about it, so thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about your travel this summer and let everybody know where you went and what you got to do?
Yeah, so like you said, in August, I was able to travel to California, spend about a week out there and compete for my club at USA Swimming Junior Nationals. And then, late August, I had the privilege to travel out to Natania, Israel, and to the Whittinggate Institute, where we had the World Junior Championships for Team USA.
Anything you want to give as a prediction for this season for the Braves, or... On top of that, like, can we hope for anything?
Yeah, you guys have, all of you have been super helpful in just supporting me and everything like that. Obviously, we took a big hit losing Gibson last year for the Braves, but with our group of young men, I think we'll be back stronger than ever.
And your parents are here with you, right?
Just my mom, yeah.
Okay, your mom is here, and we see your mom who supports you all the time as well. So Jason, we just want to provide you with this certificate as a show of our appreciation, and we're all so proud of you. You've had an amazing summer, and of course, representing yourself, your family, and Indian Hill, we're just so proud of your accomplishments. You are an amazing student athlete. You keep doing amazing things. We can't wait to see what you do in the future. Congratulations.
Thank you.
He'll probably be back. We'll probably have to invite him back. Next, I'd like to turn the program over for a few minutes here to Nancy Eichholz, and we're going to recognize Lori Kleindust, who is here with us this evening for her years of service as the IH Foundation Director at this time. I'm not going to ask Lori to stand just yet, but anybody else who is planning to speak this evening, if you could kind of make your way up to the front couple of rows of seats, and then when it's time after Nancy, we'll be able to welcome you to the podium. Let's start with Nancy Eichholz. Yes, sorry.
So Lori, I was going to make you stand up, so Kirk's a little nicer than I am. You deserve every bit of recognition you're getting this evening. So just to give some context, Lori and I go way back, way back. So when we were both very young and newlyweds, we both lived on the same street, lived across from each other, and we had our first babies right about the same time, which was such a wonderful experience. But what I remember about Lori and Tom, just not that they were just wonderful neighbors, but what I remember about Lori was being home with my first baby, having the windows open in the afternoon. We lived in Mount Lookout, where everybody lived all close together and cozy, and I would hear this gorgeous opera voice singing in the afternoons, and it was Lori. So those of you who don't know how multi-talented she is, I was like, "Here, Katie, listen to her, because you're never going to hear your mom sing." So that was kind of how we started out and grew our families together. And then we both kind of made our way out to Indian Hill, both stayed super involved in the district. And around 2005, when the foundation first started, I was on the very initial board with Lyle and Marcy, I think you were there maybe, a lot of familiar faces. And one of the things we talked about was how important it would be to have a paid leader come in. And about that time, I was no longer on the board, running a Lyle State and lots of other people, and it grew, and they found Lori to be the executive director. And I remember thinking, how wonderful this will be with her talents, her network, her skills, that I knew this would be a success. And so there's just a few highlights, there's a lot of highlights, but a few that I want to talk about that I think are really important to Lori, and so that's why I'd like to share these. On the financial side, you've grown the foundation fivefold since you came, which is just amazing. You've exceeded industry standards on donor retention and ROI, which is not an easy thing to do when you have a developing foundation. You were growing something, building it and retaining at the same time, which is no easy feat. And then you've created a healthy invested fund, the Braves Fund, to ensure the lifetime support of innovated grants for our district regardless of our school budget or funding. So that's on the financial side. You've also shepherded the merger and development of the Alumni Association and the Distinguished Alumni Awards, which I know you're really proud of. And it's been wonderful to see you bring back some of those alums that are noted and need to be recognized and have, you know, then become a strong supporter of the foundation over time. And then, with the help of our current board president, Craig Summerall, you shepherded the first public-private funding for Home of the Braves, which I think really set the tone for all that's happening now and the amazing contributions that we're receiving from the public and from private donors. And you've really just paved the way for the future, for our school, for our foundation. And as you and I both and our official service to the district, doesn't mean we'll be strangers. I know you won't be. I'm super excited to see what you do with your incredible talents, your heart, and your network, that you've, you came to us with a huge network, you were leaving with a bigger network. And on the behalf of the board, I just want to tell you how much we appreciate you personally for who you are and for what you've done. Not very many schools have a foundation the quality that we have, and it's really thanks to you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Nancy. Roll head.
Lori, this is for you. I have the proud privilege to say a few words on behalf of the foundation. And I've been privileged to associate myself with the foundation for a few years until last month, I think, so. Lori embodied all aspects. I have a few words over here that I'm going to read, right, so don't screw up here. So Lori embodied all aspects of the Indian Hill Foundation from its early days, starting from a few key visionaries, I think a couple are here in the audience, to what it is today, an engaged and rapidly growing organization that catalyzes and accelerates key projects for the Indian Hill schools. And it was great seeing that video. Congratulations to everybody who made that happen. Takes a village, as we all know, and Lori, you were a big part of that village. The list of milestones and accomplishments are long and impactful, no doubt, but what largely goes unsaid is the quiet and steady hand of those that make things happen on a continuous basis to achieve those milestones, right? Doesn't happen without that. Thank you, Lori, for your unmeasurable contributions over the years, and I'm sure you'll enjoy seeing the foundation you created and nurtured blossom and grow in years to come in manners beyond any of our expectations. Thank you for everything.
Mr. Samini, I think we have a video at this time we'd like to share. I'm going to dim the lights just one more time.
Thank you so much, Lori, for helping bring the Sue Harder Memorial Performing Arts Center to our students.
Lori, Brian Phelps, Athletic Director, thank you for bringing the Home of the Braves to our students.
Thank you, Lori, for helping to bring the Dorothy Cook STEM Eye Lab at the elementary school to our Braves.
Hi, Lori, Nate Iger, Dean of Students here. We wanted to thank you for bringing the IH Digital Arts Lab to our students.
Is there anybody else who wanted to make any commentary about Lori this evening? I just don't want to miss anybody. Lori, I'd just like to make a comment to the group again. One of the things we talked about when we met over five years ago were the two things. One was entrepreneurship. I think over the next few years, you're going to see a lot of things happening in our school district when it comes to entrepreneurship. We've already seen the growth of experience ships. We've seen discussions about creating a full-time entrepreneurial center, and we've had lots of talks about partnering with organizations, companies, nonprofits. Those were some of the ideas that Lori and I talked about. And the second one is really important as well. Lori talked to me about scholarships for students. And over the last five years, with the foundation's help and with Lori's leadership, we have expanded the number of scholarships available to students annually. That is direct impact for individuals every year, and I really appreciate your help with both of those things. Thank you so much for your years of service, Lori.
Okay, now you do have to come up here, Lori.
Lori, could you please come up to the front? So we want to present you with this gift from the leadership team and the Board of Education for your years of service. We hope you can get good use out of this. I know that you and your husband both probably can, and we thank you so much.
Thank you all so much, and it is so wonderful to see the people that worked so hard from the beginning, that had this dream. Some of the people that believed in me and hired me, and we slugged through at the beginning when there wasn't a lot of money and we were really trying to make those difficult decisions where the organization was going, so thank you all for being here tonight. It's really moving. It's been an incredible honor and privilege to serve this school community. As I said, we were young when we started, and I am going to go over some of the numbers because I think some of the people in this room probably don't know how far we've come since the beginning. You know, my first year, we raised under $80,000, and our largest gift was $5,000. The biggest grant we gave that year was $4,000. We had one career day. Last year, we raised 10 times that amount, and we got the school's first million-dollar gift. We have a million-dollar balance sheet. This is the work of everybody in this room. This is, this is why I have, I kind of forgot we did all those, I did all those things, because it's always a team effort. It's never about one person. It's about everybody working together and an incredible board of directors and my incredible teammates of 10 and 15 years. So thank you. You know, we still were operating with a part-time staff this year, and we gave $800,000 back to the school community in programming and grants with our little part-time staff. So that trust that's been built over the years, the seeds we planted together, it's going to reap benefits for generations to come. So I can't wait to see what the next chapter holds for the organization and for the school district, and thank you so much.
At this time, for anybody who is here for the reception for Lori Kleindust, it will begin across the hall in the guidance office area. Please feel free to exit and head over to the reception at this time, anybody who would like to do so. Mr. Summerall, we're going to skip letter D under the recognition piece of the report. We'll come back to that later and then move on to letter E. Mr. Nichols, anything in general for operations?
Just quickly, we continue to make great progress over at the middle school. Things like drywall and flooring are starting to go in, so we're very excited about that. I think one big moment is that our athletic offices, which are across the hall from where they used to be, are almost complete. Furniture was installed today, and I know Mr. Phelps and Mr. King are very excited. They hope to begin using those very soon, so we're moving along very nicely.
No timeline surprises?
We don't have any timeline surprises for you.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Item F, there are attachments for our annual enrollment reports for your review board members. And then, under letter G, we have the first reading again of the 24-25 school calendar. Again, we will come back to that next month. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please let me know. I do want to thank Julie, and I'm not sure if everybody who's on the calendar committee is here this evening, but Monica Gibson, I see back there for sure, Phil Clary, I know helped, Tom Millard, there were several people, Melissa, Jim, our principals. I'm probably missing somebody. Julie, am I missing anybody?
Barb Denver.
Barb, Sue, everybody who helped out with the calendar. This is a great example of collaboration with the teachers, administrators, and our board. We really appreciate all the help on this version. Melissa, Jim, Jimmy, want to hit any highlights?
No, I just think, again, the collaboration's been incredible. I think we were able to do some really great things within the calendar and still preserve some of the traditional breaks and things that our parents and community are expecting.
Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report, if that's okay, Mr. Summerall?
Yes, thank you.
First up, under letter A, we just have an annual review and approval for our career advising policy. Not many changes here. The only thing I would point out to the group, in case anybody's not aware, is that Mr. Damadeo has also been representing us at the Business Advisory Council, which is a community-wide and regional effort that Hamilton County ESC sponsors to help out with things like experience ships. And so the state wants us to have a policy in place for students to have those types of opportunities. This is the annual review of that policy. Letter B is approval of bus routes and stops. This is required annually. There's an attachment there for your review. Item C is another resolution declaring impracticability of transportation and offering payment to parents in lieu of transportation. This is my side of that proposal. Item D is the approval of an overnight field trip for our senior class for this November. It's an annual trip. And then the letter E is personnel actions, including some approvals of certified staff contracts, supplementals, classified staff contracts, the acceptance of some retirements and resignations, some change of classified staff role, and some tuition reimbursements. There is also an addendum. If you'll see on the addendum, item 7E, numbers four and number seven. I'd ask the board to entertain the superintendent's report 7A through E, 7A, that's inclusive of the addendum.
I make a motion to approve a superintendent's report, items 7A through E6, and then also inclusive of the addendum, E4 through 7A.
Second.
May we have a roll call?
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Tullis?
Yes.
Mr. Summerall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to item seven, the treasurer's report. Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Under my report for this evening, I would like to approve the minutes of the August 10th, 2023, regular meeting, approve the financial reports for the month ending August 31st, 2023. I have four now-and-thens for this month to pay. I'd approve the establishment of the following student activities. There are three of them there. Those are accounts that would be set up to house money for the campus life, class of 2027, and Project Tech. Once we establish Project Tech, I would like to transfer $5,775 from the principal's fund at the high school to that account. If you remember, this was the fund that last year's Big Pitch funded, so we're just simply moving that out of the principal's fund into its own account. They would like to have that account continue in perpetuity. Item F is a contract for Forward Edge. It's for our managed cybersecurity solution for the school year. Item G is the acceptance of donations. First one is from the IH Foundation to the high school. It's for $5,000 for esports. $10,000 is for the 2024 Big Pitch. We're already getting ready for that for the school year. The second one's for IH Boosters. That goes to the arts and athletics. It's their annual donation of $25,000 for discretionary purchases, $12,500 to each of those groups. On the addendum, there is an acceptance of a donation from Sean and Megan Cole for athletics. It's a Field General Football Machine valued at $3,846, or $48.46. I would like to skip item H for the time being and go to item I on the addendum. That is a change of an appropriation to increase Fund 507. We did have $2,867.62, Fund 507, the SIR Fund, to spend before September 30th. Wanted to make sure we got that spent. That is taken care of. I just wanted to make sure now we're getting it appropriated correctly. So if there aren't any questions, I would like to entertain a motion to approve items A through G and I as presented this evening.
I will make a motion, but before that, I'm going to make a comment. I think this is the first treasurer's report that I can remember. We have not had a change order for construction increased costs, so congratulations, team, on that. With that, I would make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, item A through G plus the addendum, G and I.
Exclusive of A.
Exclusive of H for the time being.
I second.
Roll call.
Mr. Tullis?
Yes.
Mrs. Singh?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Summerall?
Yes.
Thank you, and with that, I would like to present item H. It's a donation from Sam and Nolan Marks. It's for a leadership summit event for $5,000. We do appreciate that donation. As always, we appreciate the donations that's given to help supplement the things we do here in the district. If there aren't any questions about item H, I would like to entertain a motion to approve that.
May we have a motion?
I move we accept treasurer's report, item H, number one. Thank you, Sam and Nolan Marks, for that donation.
I'll second.
Let's go. Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Mr. Tullis?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Summerall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Summerall up next. Item nine on the addendum is the addition of Neola policy updates. We do this twice a year. This is the first reading for nine, A through Q. We don't need to take any action at this time. If you have any questions or concerns about any of the policy updates, please contact me, and we can review those before next month.
Okay, thank you.
Item 10 is other business. We'd like to talk about the Field House for just a moment. We held a quest for call, recall... We held a quest for qualifications. That's hard for me to say, RFQ. For a design-build of a potential Field House project, the results were pleasing. We received six teams of construction and design partners. The district assembled a committee that interviewed each of these six groups via Zoom to create a shortlist. The district's committee consisted of Mr. Davis, Mr. Tullis, Mr. Nichols, and our district council for construction, Mark Evans from Bricker Grayden. All the teams were well-qualified, and it was difficult to narrow the field. The following is our shortlist read in alphabetical order. Each pair will be read as the construction firm followed by the design firm. Conger MSA, Graybach SHP, Oswald SMP, RJ Beichel VSWC. Jennifer Burton will be sending emails to each participant from tonight's board meeting, thanking them for their participation and notifying them of the results. The shortlist will receive the Request for Proposal, or RFP, which is the next step. The deadline for submitting their proposals will be October 10. We will be reviewing those in committee meetings as we get to October. We have both an operations and a finance committee meeting prior to the next board meeting. Want to thank everybody who is involved. And on a separate note, with the Day of Giving and Fund the Field House activity, we have already had people donating for the Fund the Field House effort prior to September 29. But just want to remind everybody that that Day of Giving is coming up on September 29, and then we will review that activity as well as any other fundraising after the fact. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Konecki. Okay, do we have any other business by the board administration? Okay, we're going to move to item 11, Executive Session in accordance with ORC 121.22-GI1. May I have a motion to enter into Executive Session?
I move we enter into Executive Session in accordance with ORC 121.22-G1.
May we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Mr. Tullis?
Yes.
Mrs. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Sumerall?
Yes. Okay, just an announcement for everyone here. There will be no further action after this when we come back, so please don't feel obligated to stay and wait around. You're welcome to, but you don't have to. So it's totally your decision. So we just want to make sure you're aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Exclusive coverage on the Indian Hill Television Network has been a copyrighted presentation of the Indian Hill High School Video Department.